Seven o'clock, we call me, we're selecting the order for a side of business political regions. Selectmen must go. Okay, four of the selectmen are here present, Selectman Baker is joining us virtually. Our first item, I have a couple of added agenda items if I could. Like to add agenda item seven C, which is the appointment of Heather Spencer to the permanent building for a term expiring nine one twenty twenty eight. And under nine B, I'd like to add a resolution authorizing the first selectman to sign a personal services agreement with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Proceed bond funds. Could I have a motion to add those?
I'll move that those items be added to the agenda.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alan is in favor, I guess. Okay, now we're on to the approval of this from August eighteenth. There is an addition that needs to be made, sir, I think you have the motion?
Yes, I'd like to add some clarification to page nine to the motion that was not heard when we came out of executive session. I made the motion and Selectman Baker seconded it. And the motion was, I move to appoint attorney Kevin Dunne of O'Malley and Dunne as special counsel for certain labor matters.
Any other corrections?
I moved to approve the regular meeting minutes as amended for August eighteenth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correct, okay, public participation. This is one of the two opportunities for members of the public to address the board of selection. I'll first ask anybody who's here present, if they would like to address the board, kindly state your name and your address. I'll turn the same opportunity over to anybody who's joined us virtually. There'll be another opportunity later in the meeting. There, if anybody here present would like to address the board of select, yes, sir, name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Barbara. Quick question on the adjustment to the amendments that were just made, shouldn't there be a count for the vote?
That was in the menu.
It was in this, oh, it was, yeah, it was just make the, the motion to make her to the second. Okay, the audio, for whatever reason, didn't pick up.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
When you share it, one nineteen Main Street, maybe even long place, but I don't know where to go. I'm trying to get a layout of my set of instruments for my house. And I went to the building department, they had nothing. I went into the zoning, they had nothing, they both told me to call them, or it's, yep, North Central, that's nothing.
Really? So, North Central is supposed to be the keeper of that information, so.
This is the property.
If you, if you could send me an email with the addresses, I'll see if I can find those. Yes, sir, name and address.
Jim Barton, one fifty-eight South Water Street. Have a comment on your last meeting where you addressed the appointment of someone to the Water Pollution Control Authority? And at that meeting, first selectman indicated that the plant superintendent had concerns about that appointment? And then, nothing happened, and so, that just went away. So, my question is, the Water Pollution Control Authority oversees the plant superintendent and his operation. So, how does the plant superintendent get the authority to essentially veto the appointment of someone to his board? And additionally, as, as you probably know, that board only has five members, and it has two vacancies. So, everybody has to attend in order to even get a call. At the last meeting, the board chairman told you that he was not going to be able to hold a meeting for the rest of this year if he couldn't get another member. So, again, my main concern is, it's, you, you have an application for an appointment. The application presumably can contain some, some references and so forth. But it seems like this appointment was derailed simply by the plant superintendent, who I believe has a conflict in it.
Thank you. Other comments from members of the public? Anybody online which could address the board, please unmute yourself, give your name and your address and state your business. Hey, there'll be another opportunity later in the meeting. All right, let's wait for Charlie to get back. Just doing a good deed by keeping the door open. Thanks, Charlie. Okay, there's a couple of correspondences. First, Representative Paul had raised this with us a while ago, about the possibility of working with the town of Enfield to convert this, the effectively defunct rail line behind Town Hall to the state line into a linear park, commonly referred to as a rail trail. I watched that with, or participated with the new town manager from Town of Enfield to point out why that's not really a reasonable opportunity for economic development as it currently is constituted? And to kind of create that, offer an olive branch to the town of Enfield to work together on that. So, I offered the same opportunity to the members of Enfield Town Hall. I have not heard back, but, you know, at least we're trying to advance that in some way. So, that's that. The next one, something you guys have probably not seen before. There is a statutory provision that allows for interest on liquid property taxes to be waived under very specific circumstances. That specifically is if the delinquency is not the fault of the taxpayer, and it needs to be attested to by both the tax collector and the assessor. In order to do that, they have done what they need to do in terms of verification of that and submission of the notification to us. This is simply a communication, it does not require any action at all, they're just required by statute to notify us. So, that's what's going on, they explain the circumstance, why, and it had to do with the software conversion, but it's the first time I've ever seen one of these, so probably the person you guys have as well. Okay. I'm trying to come to nine o'clock. Seven A, we don't have any, seven B, we don't have any, seven C is an added agenda item, which is the appointment of Heather Spencer to the Permanent Building Commission. Her application was sent to you by a separate cover. She's here, if anybody doesn't know her, or would like to ask her any questions, but she's got references, she's got actually quite an appropriate professional background for the role. So, the application is before you.
We'll move to appoint Heather Spencer to the Building Commission as a regular member for a term expiring September first, twenty twenty eight.
There's a second?
Oh.
Second? Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll just say thank you for stepping forward, that's going to be an important group in the next year and a half, we hope, so, thank you. All in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Selectman Baker voted in the affirmative. Okay. Where are we now? Did we table agenda item eight C and go on to agenda item nine A? So, move.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That was I in terms of post, of tabling it, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jason, eight C?
Eight C is, is tabled, we'll take it up after the town meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, nine A, you'll recall, I've mentioned to you the interest in doing all staff retreats for town employees and for this body. We have, Melissa Maltese has, has worked with this company in the past for certain trainings for her, you, you programming stuff for, for summer camp counselors. The gentleman is a bit for a retreat type things with our town on October twenty eighth, so first of all, if you guys can put that on your calendar, it's going to be a half day thing, it'll be the first half of the day. So, if you're able to make it, that would be fantastic. But this is a contract, and I need authorization from the selectmen in order to sign it. Any questions or comments on the proposal in front of you? Yes?
I just have a question in regards to liability. It looks like it's more sports oriented, kind of thing, um, in order to, there's a very normal, um, and as we speak, now, ten and twelve, I mean, what's the liability in the town if somebody should break the leg? Get hurt?
Well, we're not, we're not going to be doing hiking or the like, what they'll do is they're going to break, they're, they're going to break the total assembled body up into uncomfortable groups to try and push people outside of their comfort. And they're going to do things like problem solving and I'm going to use the example, this is what's going to happen, but I'm using the example of trust balls or like activities, and that, it's not a physically exerting thing, we're not, no, it's not going to be vital, it's bypassing. It's going to be docile.
I'm just concerned because if people have to send away for it to attend it, so that's why I'm probably concerned.
It's also a title of building, a title of building, so it falls under our liability. Good.
I still have a concern that somebody is sticking injured out there. Especially because it's going to be going, China is going to be outdoor activities and moves to physical activity. Physical intensity.
Where are you seeing outdoor activities?
Under a tight dress, properly, proper activity, moderate physical intensity, and for anticipated weather.
So, so.
It's comfortable, loose fitting clothing, for hiking, outdoors, and post, so there's been a requirement, okay, top.
So, the itinerary is right here, and it's not, I mean, it's, it's basically designed to be able to move around, but it's playing card networking icebreaker. It, it's a tennis ball balancing act, team building is not, has, it's I mean, I've done these before, they're, they're, you move around, but you're not, nobody's going to be breaking a sweat. Unless, do you have concerns? Any other questions or comments?
I'll move the town and turn an agreement within power of leadership for the emerged team building workshop on Friday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, from ten AM to twelve PM at Scout Hall Youth Center for up to fifty percent, excuse me, fifty participants, and authorize the first selectman to sign.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, sorry.
Yeah, it indicates under what it where, on the, on the, so, twelve thirty, putting, right out, you know.
We have, we have the building for the day. So, that's just what his itinerary. Yeah, I mean, the program is going to, we're going to move on to a different piece of the activity at, at noon, and he's, they're going to collapse, but they're, it's, uh, any further discussions?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, back in July, we took the first somewhat unofficial step towards the formulation of a redevelopment authority pertaining to the execution of eminent domain on the site formerly designated as the MMCT Casino. There, as we've all discussed, I think a couple of times, there is a statutory process instituted here to, including the recommendation by this board to the town meeting to impanel a redevelopment. So, that's what we're doing now, and I've got six of the seven names identified to be put forward to, to the town meeting, although the appointment rests with this body so that people have a sense of who is going to be participating in the, in the process. I tried really hard to bring a cross-section of people together who bring professional experience and technical expertise that's important for this type of work, so you'll see people with municipal management experience, you'll see MBAs, you'll see business owners, you'll see engineers, you'll see economic development professionals, and you'll see philanthropy. All, all listed on that, amongst that group, so it covers as broad of a cross-section as I was able to put together, and there's one vacancy still to be seated. So, if somebody, well, let's, any concerns or questions about this so far? No?
So, with the process of this, we establish a resolution first, and then, do we do official appointments of these people, like we do a regular border commission?
So, we're going to, we're going to kind of be both at the same time, and the vacancies get filled by our, which is status quo for how we typically do it. But in this case, we're notifying as much sunshine and transparency for the town meeting as we can, that this is what we're doing, this is who's doing it, this is how it's going to happen.
So, and then, are we, do we set up charge as well?
I think it's in it.
I don't think so, but I think that's something different. Yeah, I, I, to me, it was a little bit vague as to what the actual charge is by reading this. And I was also questioning if we do that at this time, or if we establish the resolution first and put forth the charge after.
Let me look at what the statute is, they specifically reference.
Yeah, I was looking, there's, that's quite a big, I'm looking at that.
We can table this, if you want to do it, I can get some further clarification. We're all supposed to specifically enumerate parcel, that's not, I so, parcel. Charge. So, a motion to postpone, that would be important.
A motion to postpone. And item nine B, establishment of redevelopment authorities pertaining to one oh five Prospect Hill Road until the next meeting, you think, or?
Yeah.
Until the next meeting?
Motion that you made and seconded, any discussion on postponements?
Sorry, Jason, the second was Marie.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor of postponement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you'll remember last year, about this time, we worked with Westfield State University's Organizational Behavior Course to do a constituent service improvements project in our language departments. I actually thought that was a pretty positive experience, both, both for us and for the students. So, the, the professor reached out and asked if we would be interested in doing it again, and I thought that would be a great idea. So, he and I came up with a, a new scope that's somewhat different from the last one, but it's, it's covered in the LOU, and it discusses an assessment of the town of East Windsor's economic development activity, communication, and public support. So, there's been a lot of efforts done to make East Windsor a friendly place to locate a business and grow your family. There's been a lot of work done in terms of general communication to the public, and what this organizational behavior project would do is to look at how well things are integrating and make recommendations for how to improve that, where there are deficiencies. This is the no cost project for the, the town.
To check it all out.
It's a no, no cost, no, no time commitment thing for the town, and something I do off the block with the, the courses, but it is, again, a contract, so I need authorization from the selectmen to pursue that, if that's what you guys want to do.
I'll make a motion to enter into the number of understanding and assessment of the town of East Windsor Economic Development Activity Commission for with Westfield State University, not the public administration purpose, and authorize this.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tax refunds.
I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling one thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nine E, our second added agenda item, then we'll call it quick until after the town meeting. So, as everybody knows, everybody on the board knows, maybe people in the audience don't, the town is the recipient of about eight hundred thousand dollars in state bond funds for certain specific purposes. Those purposes include the installation of lights at the Abbey Road soccer facility, as well as certain other park improvements, that's actually what the language in the call of the bond commission says, and certain other park in conversation with the folks at the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection who administer those bond funds on behalf of the state, they there's a process that we need to go through, and as such, we need to sign a contract with them called a personal services agreement. In order to do this resolution, the this resolution needs to be authorized by the board of selectmen so that I can sign the personal services agreement with the state, and we can get the money for those projects. Questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize first selectmen to enter into, um, what do you call it, a personal contract?
Personal services.
A personal service agreement, meaning town of East Windsor in
Department of Energy.
Department of Energy, Environmental Protection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now, I'd like a motion to recess until after the town meeting, so move, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, I forgot about the delay, Al. We are in recess at seven twenty-three. All right, at seven thirty, I'm going to call the town meeting to order, our first item of business is the election of a moderator, is there a motion?
From October twenty-five, last afternoon, I nominate Jason Bowser as moderator.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Motion to close nominations would be in order.
Nominations be closed, Charlie Norrell, seven grand, De Terrace.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close nominations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed? All in favor of Jason Bowser as moderator, please say aye.
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 I'm not going to ask the, I'm not going to ask the town clerk to read the town meeting public notice, that clerk.
Okay, word corrected, notice of special town meeting, East Windsor, Connecticut. The legal voters of the town of East Windsor are hereby warned that a town meeting will be held at the Town Hall, eleven Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, and via Zoom on Thursday, September first, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty PM for the following. Item one, to consider and vote on an additional appropriation in the sum of two hundred thousand from the town's unassigned general fund balance for East Windsor High School roof replacement. Item two, to consider and vote on an appropriate, an additional appropriation in the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from the town's unassigned general fund balance for replacement of a loader for the Department of Public Works. Item three, to consider and vote on an additional appropriation in the sum of two hundred and sixty thousand from the town's unassigned general fund balance for replacement of a gas pump at the Department of Public Works. Item four, to consider and vote on an additional appropriation in the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand for open space funding as approved by the board of selectmen on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Data that East Windsor, Connecticut, this twenty-fifth day of August, two thousand twenty-two. East Windsor Board of Selectmen, Jason E. Bowser, first selectman, Marie De Sista, deputy selectman, Vera Muska, selectman, Alan Baker, selectman, Charlie Norrell, selectman.
Thank you, good and clerk. I'm now going to read the eligibility to vote. At any town meeting other than a regular or special town election, or any meeting of any fire, sewer, or school district, or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act, any person who is an elector of such town may vote, and any citizen of the United States over the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or separately is liable to the town, district, or subdivision for taxes assessed against him on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grant list of such town, district, or subdivision, or who would be so liable if not entitled to exemption under Connecticut general statutes, subdivision seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, or twenty-six of section twelve dash eighty-one may vote unless restricted by any provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. I'm now going to ask whoever has resolution number one, please state your name, read the resolution, and move.
Heather Spencer, six three, Reguay. Item number one, to consider and defer an additional appropriation in the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from the town's unassigned general fund balance for East Windsor High School roof replacement. I move the foregoing resolution to adopt.
Is there a second? Brandon, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the resolution? Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street. We get an overview of where all this money is coming from, because it's going to apply to every one of these, and I don't think everybody understands.
Sure, so we have what's called the, our, our undesignedated fund balance, which is, to put it in, in conversant terms, it's effectively the town's rainy day fund. We have a stated policy that's approved by our financial overseers that says that the fund balance should be between ten and twenty percent of our annual appropriation, or annual budget appropriation. In excess of that, I mean, my policy being to spend that down. We're at, and the director of finance is here, so she can correct me on my math, but I think we're at about twenty-three point nine one percent, or thereabouts, prior to these added appropriations. So, by appropriating what comes out to be about nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, we will drop just below the maximum allowable under our stated policy. Clear as bud? Any other comments on the resolution?
Better than the floor.
Any other comments on the resolution? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion clearly passes, thank you, folks. Who has resolution number two? Mr. Sherry, I think that's you.
Consider discussing appropriate additional provisions of three hundred thousand dollars from the town's unassigned general fund balance, replacing a loader for the Department of Public Works.
The foregoing resolution is moved, is there a second?
Second.
I didn't see it, Marie, motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Probably, thirty-nine, thirty. Just curious as to what might happen to the old loader, the, 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 or, 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 and whether it would be pulled public often, and whether or not it goes on and come back to the town.
Probably not going to be sold at all in the short term, we would keep it around as a backup. Just this week, actually, one of the hydraulic, hydraulic fluid lines ruptured and was inoperable, which would be a real problem in a snowstorm, but it's something we probably would keep on hand, at least in the short term, as a, as a backup, as a spare. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that, any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is that Nicole?
Yep.
I think that was the way.
Yeah. I'll go slower on calling the opposition, just to verify, that was an I. Who is number three? Yes, sir.
Tom Lassner, twenty-seven Laurel Circle. I don't, number three, consider and discuss an additional appropriation in the sum of two hundred and sixty thousand from the town's unassigned general fund balance for replacement of a gas pump at the Department of Public Works, I move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Ninety-seven.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yes, uh, hold on. Uh, Nicole Vassella, fifty-three, Prospect Hill Drive. I did not see anything in regards to this, so I haven't had a chance to research this at all. Um, how can we verify that it costs two hundred and sixty thousand to replace a gas pump?
Uh, that number is predicated on the submission who's uh, entered into the capital improvement planning process uh, this time last year.
And wasn't the public works just given over seven hundred thousand dollars from C I P?
So when C I P allocations are done, they're not given in lump sums, they're allocated for specific purposes. Um, and this was not one of those that was funded, but it is somewhat of an urgent circumstance.
So how much has public works taken in so far this year? I mean, I, I just, I need more time to research everything before I can approve this as a citizen.
Okay. I don't, I don't have an answer for you on that. I don't, I don't, do you know, Amy, how much uh, in total this year?
I know. I mean, they get a chunk for pavement management.
Right.
For all the roads, but I don't know the actual total amount that they receive. And this is something that all departments use the gas from. And it's the storage tanks in addition to the gas pump. It's not the pump that you actually pump from, it's the whole system and the computer system that runs it.
And the current computer system operates on a DOS um, operating system. Um, and one of the concerns, especially with, with gas prices and supply chain issues as effective as they have been, is that we can't hold um, more than a week's worth of gasoline on site. Uh, or, or fuel, actually, we can't hold more than a, a week's worth of fuel on site, which means the price of shipping it um, is something that impacts our line too, not just the price of the gas, the price of the transportation of it to get it to here. So that's a, a component of this too. This will allow us more capacity to do that also with an operating system that's not as old as I am.
Okay.
Any comments on the uh, resolution? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
I took the clarification question on what you're saying. You mean, you can't in by law hold more gas than you would use in a week, or is it that right now we don't have the capacity to hold gas?
We don't, we don't have the capacity to do that. The other concern, uh, that's a somewhat present concern is that um. If the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection were to decide that the system that we have now is no longer functional, we're gonna be sending fire trucks and snowplows to the gas station to fill up until we can get this replaced. Um, we are well past having time to do this. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? My. Any opposed? Who has resolution number four?
Alfred Grant, uh, one twenty-eight, nine eleven, Rosie. Uh, to consider and discuss additional appropriations in the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for open space funding as approved by the Board of Selectmen on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. I move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? Yes, ma'am.
How, how would this money? I was just wondering how the money would be um, distributed or used towards, uh, you know, open space.
So the, the funding is designated into an open space fund, which is a non-general fund, fund, where the, the money is part, as well as other monies that come in for that purpose, then it's under the purview and control of planning and zoning permission.
Um, so planning and zoning, that's to make the decision.
Yeah, the, the most, the most um recent example of a large use of the funds were when the town partnered with the, the state and the Natural Resources Conservation Service to purchase the development rights on farmland on um, Rice Street. I think it's across from Pagano's. Uh, the land that surrounds Alan Baker's house. Um, that was uh, about a two hundred thousand dollar project from the towns involved. Uh, considerably more from the state.
And I just wondered how it was decided where it would be spent or.
Any other specific controls that we should mention?
I don't know what we have for an ordinance for open space. I don't know, maybe somebody's in the mission.
Mr. Grant?
Um, emergence, not a lot of emergence, but uh, it would ultimately come to a town meeting to approve it in the end, I need to venture of that, but uh, it can be, open space fund can be used for appraisals and uh, surveys and things. You know, leading up to preserving open space, it can also be used for matching grants programs, state, or the one, and the E E P is another that offer grants for preserving open spaces, require our contributions by the municipality. The, of the range of ways to use the money. You know, ultimately be approved by planning and zoning, then the Board of Selectmen and town meeting.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir. Name and address, please. Oh, Mr. Sherry, you did it all right. You're good.
Will you share it, and then can you expand on it and explain what exactly open space is? I see it's funding, though, is it? What do you, you find?
So open space could be farmland, could be uh, passive recreation land, uh, unimproved undeveloped land.
Okay, so open park.
Yes.
So how do you, I'm determined, when's the vote?
Well, in the case of the, I'll use the Rice Street one as an example, that was actually a, a program that was, or it was an application that was administered through the state's Preservation and Development Rights Program at the Department of Agriculture. So the farm owner, uh, in that case, approached the state and said, I'd like to sell the development rights to my parcel. Um, what that means is, so um, a normal unimproved piece of property is what's called fee simple, all rights intact. When the, when you sell your development rights to the state, that means you're selling the rights to develop that property, but you're retaining the agricultural value of the land. Um, so there is actually, it's a real estate tool that allows you to separate that out. So you can preserve that land in perpetuity for agricultural purposes. A similar mechanism is available for open space preservation through D E E P. Um, it, it precludes, you can't build a subdivision there, you can't build a commercial building there, you can't build more than, more than the number of houses that are negotiated at the point of the convenience of the development rights. So it basically is a way of, of preserving that land in a particular state in perpetuity. That better? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay, chair is unanimously. No further business before the town meeting, a motion to adjourn will be in order.
So moved to adjourn.
Made by Charlie, seconded by Tom, town meeting, Rice Room, twenty-seven. Twenty-three. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Town meeting is adjourned at seven forty-six. Thank you all very much for coming out. Appreciate it. Alright, it's seven fifty-four. I'm gonna return to the call of the uh, selectmen's meeting. Our next item of business is agenda item eight C. So, you'll all recall that um, we did a rather extensive community-wide survey um, to nine thousand homes on the best use of our American Rescue Plan remaining funds. We received seven hundred unique comments, a- all of which I have read, organized, categorized, and laid out in the following PowerPoint. It is a thirty-five slide PowerPoint. I promise it's not gonna be very long. I'm gonna, I figured out how to zip right through this, but I wanted you guys to have all of the work that was done, so you can do a deeper dive on your own terms, and, and I'll explain kind of what I'm thinking the next steps are when we get to the end. One of the things, one of the things I wanna make clear is, so nine thousand surveys, seven hundred came back. I did the very best I could to categorize these with, without subjectivity. I can promise you that that was not successful. So if anybody would like to try and do that same exercise of your own, I'll be happy to make time to look at your responses. So. So this is um, the breakdown of where the responses that we got came from. Uh, again, we sent out just short of nine thousand surveys to registered voters utilizing the voter list, and we received back about seven hundred responses. This is that same uh, information broken down by a percentage of uh, return by each group. You'll see that more than seventy percent of the respondents were fifty-five years or older. By contrast, a little more than thirty-five percent of the population falls in that same age distribution. This slide. It moved, good. Uh, this slide shows the weighted scoring to the six original questions that were asked, uh, and that were included in the survey. Uh, you can see that hard infrastructure, environmental quality, and quality of life in the priority areas that were identified by the community. Um, both scored four point one, two, three point eight, seven, and three point seventy on a five-point scale. Um, after category, categorizing the nearly seven hundred written responses, I came to a hundred and forty-eight unique response categories. Those are listed here. So you can see that the um, topics and the ideas that people were talking about fall into one of each of those hundred and forty-eight um, topics. So this is that same breakdown, um, and it shows where the spikes in those category, categorized responses are. And there's a, a second way to look at that, which may be a little easier. That, that's what, this is that, another way of looking at that same thing. So you're already on slide number eight. Go quick. Um, so to narrow the, the batch of hundred and forty-eight down, um, the first thing that I did is I removed those ideas that are already happened. Um, you can see the number of times someone referenced each of these ideas by the, the scale on the bottom. Uh, each of these things, it either already happening or has already happened. So I took those out of the, the pool of responses to analyze. Um, I then removed those ideas that were submitted, um, that were simply not feasible or not legal. Uh, as you can see, none of those received more than one mention. Um. Some of these are not permitted under law, some of them are not, you know, they don't retain the property under our control. Um, some of them are just not economically feasible, but you know, they're, they're up there. So this chart shows the number of comments out of seven hundred and spoke to each category under roads. So of those hundred and forty-eight um, categories, there were some comments that fell into multiple categories. So that's, that's what I'm trying to show here. Um, this allows the board to see which aspects of each of those hundred and forty-eight clusters were the most popular. Um, the same thing holds true for the next several slides that I'm, I'm gonna do this exercise with. Here under road projects, you can see that road improvements were by far the most popular. Under school-related projects, we had, we had a litany of school-related projects that were included in people's comments with school upgrade being the most recited request, although, and this was the case with a number of other responses as well, it's unclear exactly what a school upgrade means. What does that mean? Wasn't clear in the comments. There are a number of cases where um, where that's gonna jump out. For drainage projects, by the way, the dredging of the Robert Pond was the most requested comment under drainage, but uh, that's still only spiked at twelve. For public safety, um. Public safety facilities, actually, this is, this should be public safety improvements, not facilities, is what that slide should say. Um, speed mitigation led the way for public safety improvements. Um, there are a number of people who had complaints about speed. Um, for tree-related issues, um, at three comments, inclusion of more trees in East Windsor Park led the Tree Related Issues Group. No, nobody else had more than one. Farmland preservation was quite popular with twenty-six mentions. Light concerns and beautification, which really go hand in hand, far out of economic development. I'm sorry?
It's economic development.
Right. No, uh, if you look at the two large bars, white and.
We can't read those words.
So what, light and beautification really were the economic development topics that were the most commented on, and they really go hand in hand together. Um, so if you add those two categories together, there were twenty-seven of the, the uh, hundred and, or of, of the seven hundred that's mentioned, either light or beautification. Under recreation, um, again, the two topics that spiked considerably are sidewalks and walking trails. Um, they combined for a total of eighty-one mentions. Playgrounds and park improvements led the park improvements category. So again, park improvements is a little bit of one of those amorphous things. What does it really mean? Wasn't really clear in the comments, but that came through. Um, so playgrounds and park improvements each got uh, three comments, um, for a total of six together. Water quality, uh, public water expansion led the way with three mentions, uh, and we have a number of projects, you know, worth containing for that. I'll talk a little bit about that in my slide report. For facilities improvements, um, there was no real clear one here. There was also not a lot of mentions for it, but the annex, you know, the annex renovation got two. For cost assistance, um, a tax break was the biggest request of twenty-six mentions. Um, it's worth pointing out, though, that, that if we could use our money for a tax break, it, it would create a number of other problems, uh, not the least of which is what happens when the funding went out. Uh, that either creates a service cut or a tax. For public safety staffing, um, there were a couple of mentions for hazard pay. For environmental projects, again, somewhat unspecified, um. There for environmental quality, environmental projects and electric vehicle charging stations received a combined fifteen mentions. Under social services, mental health got twenty mentions with food insecurity and public and senior transportation each receiving ten. Nothing else really spines very much. That's my ring there. Um, under tourism, Reals to Trails received eight mentions. Um, four people requested funding for libraries under quality of light. So I'm gonna come back to this chart, that's a, a repeat from earlier, but a little bit different. Um, in orange, we see um, subcategories that could reasonably make up um, infrastructure, environmental quality, and quality of life. That's what we're gonna do next, and I'm gonna take those hundred and forty-eight responses that we did. And I'm gonna uh, take all of the responses from those hundred and forty-eight that could be reasonably inferred as hard infrastructure, quality of life, or environmental quality, and then show what that looks like. Another way to kind of twist the data. So these are all of the responses that, of the one forty-eight, um, where people mentioned some sort of hard infrastructure. So you can see far and away, road improvements led the pack with at least forty-five mentions. Uh, you could certainly also make the argument that roads, road repair, road paving, and road maintenance should fall under road improvements, but that's not how the breakdown came in the comments. But if you're looking for a trend or a direction, clearly that's there. So from there, what I did is I took all of those categories that could have fallen under hard infrastructure, and I removed anything that didn't get at least ten comments of support. So that leaves for hard infrastructure subcategories, three things that are still viable. That would be route, the Route Five traffic study, road improvements, and dredging of Robert Pond. So I did that same exercise under environmental quality. These are all of the categories that could have fallen under environmental quality. Um, and you can see that farmland preservation was absolutely the dominant request. When I removed, removed everything that didn't get at least ten comments, that leaves only farmland preservation. Under quality of life, there were many more categories that fell under the quality of life heading. Um, here sidewalks and walking trails, as well as mental health, um, led those categories clearly. Um, when I take out anything that didn't get at least ten comments here, um, there are actually quite a few that are still viable. Um, so you can see uh, light, beautification, sidewalks, walking trails, pickleball, bike paths, public and senior transportation, mental health, and food insecurity are all still in the conversation. Um, but sidewalks and walking trails, as well as mental health, are, are clearly the head of the pack under quality of life, um, categories. So then I took anything uh, that had more than ten category, ten comments across those three categories, hard infrastructure, environmental quality, and quality of life. Um, and then I highlighted the top five response areas. Each uh, each presented different challenges and opportunities in their own, but you can see that the, the top five across those sectors that the, the respondents said were important to. that the respondents said were important to them. Road improvements, sidewalks, walking trails, mental health, and farmland preservation are the leaders of the pack. So then there are a number of other factors that ultimately we're going to have to consider. A few of them are outlined here. Leveraging of other funds. So with the remaining roughly two point one million dollars that we have available, how can we best stretch those available dollars? How can we leverage that against other funding sources, whether it's the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act? The, what's the new one? The Inflation Reduction Act, the Community Investment Fund, state funding, certain DOT or crowd grants. Oftentimes, those have a non-funding source match requirement. So if we used our ARPA dollars to match against some of those other things, is that a way for us to stretch the available funding that we have? So other means of funding certain projects, certainly we have some availability to accomplish some of these things outside of ARPA. So we would need to balance whether or not we are going to use ARPA dollars for that purpose or use the ARPA dollars for a purpose. We may not be able to leverage non-federal funds. So roads and farmland preservation comes to mind on that one. Mostly because with the farmland preservation component of it, that gets the next one, which is the expiration of funds. The funding needs to be committed for whatever we're going to use the funding for by the end of calendar twenty-four and spent by the end of calendar twenty-six, or the federal government will reclaim it. So we need to think about the ability to expend the dollars on the target within those time periods. And the other thing to think about is, are we going to be able to accomplish those? I'm sorry, what happens when the funding disappears? So are we creating something that's going to create unintentional problems down the road? Are we going to have sustainability issues with whatever we're trying to do? Because the funding was there, and then once it's gone, we're not going to be able to backfill it with local dollars. So that's something we'll have to consider as well. The cost-benefit analysis. How do we get the biggest bang for the buck? So for example, walking trails were pretty popular. Walking trails can pretty easily be established by buying a bot cat, and then you have the bot. And then all you need then is to operate it. It doesn't require substantial reinvestment time to time again, because you already own the piece. But that's what I'm talking about in terms of a cost-benefit consideration. So that's what I found. You guys are welcome to do a deep dive into that stuff, you know, digest it, think about it. See if you can find a pathway here that makes some sense for us to move forward. That's what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to figure out what we're doing next with this, but I wanted to make sure that I was circling back with you all on the responses to the surveys that we got. So we could at least kind of visualize what the people we asked their opinions of told us they were interested in. Again, there is some subjectivity in this. It's unintentionally there, but I'm sure it's there. If anybody, you know, has a different way of looking at it. You know, I have jokingly said, you want to do your own version of this, but if you do, I entertain it. But if there's a different way of looking at the information that either the response put forward in their surveys or that I put forward here, we just need to kind of start charting a path on this, and I didn't know how better to start with that than to try and visualize it somewhere. So that's that. It can't, I mean, it's a public document now. I just want to make it very clear that, you know, in terms of public scrutiny on this, I did the best I could to remove subjectivity, but I was not successful.
I don't want to pick it apart. Couldn't read both of them, so I'd like to move.
Yeah, I'll actually have. I'll get you a copy.
Well, I think you did next one based upon what I read when we were able to get copies of all of the responses that came back. So if anybody can do a better job than what you did. I can visualize you sitting there putting one here, one here, one here, one here.
Oh, it was.
So I commend you for it because I know the effort and the time it took you to do it, so.
Well, thanks. It was worth doing, I guess, but it was it was hard. Okay, so any comments or constructive criticism on that to begin? Or do we want to, I, we certainly, you guys need some time to kind of dive in. I get that. We're not going to make any decisions tonight, but I take any feedback that's helpful towards moving the process forward. There isn't one.
Just a question. Do you know if the American Heritage River Commission has a brochure or something that indicates the recreational and walking areas that we currently have? Because we do have you know, a decent amount of properties now that are able to be passed, and I don't know. People are aware of what there currently is.
They do have some kind of brochure.
Okay.
I'm just not sure what it includes.
Okay.
Because they put in for the request for reimbursement. It's really one of the things I know about it.
So it exists, but.
Okay.
I think your point is well.
Um, Mr. Gray. Republican speaking. AHR has multi-facets on it. State parks in Melrose. State property. We've developed a trail there and maintain that. There are other places in town where trail could be built and maintained.
That's true.
But that's our main work focuses on that area because limited manpower.
But there's a lot of open space that was intentionally held along connector river years ago. Right, call correctly. So there's lots of stuff behind Wood Park, I know. And there's some others further down. So it might be worth to see if we could get something out of maybe one of the park and heritage should have that. Maybe planning zoning, pick performance and see what property it's found on.
In the plantation road, there's a significant opportunity for trail here. Further to town property, and also with the preservation of the farmland. There the actual amusement that allows the public use of the river drainage there. So that is the bridge that has public access. Further with space there. It's not, there's nothing there now.
And then there's also the consideration for in there too is walking trails within the parking wreck property too.
And they weren't really specifically, you know, walking trails.
Right. But it was set under parking wreck walking trails and under the other walking trails, I recall some of the things I know. We need to judge it for a little bit more, thank.
Alan, you got two.
You know, just to continue that conversation, as far as the the walking trails go, you know, AHRC put together that that one really official walking trail that we have at Melrose and the town owns land across the street, you know, that bridge was established across the Skinnick River to give access to it. They do have plans, I know, on the on the same side that the trail is on now, to extend that trail up, you know, further, and of course, that would require more material for bridges and stuff. And although they did replace some bridges recently, there's more work to be done there. So I think that that's someplace we should definitely try to refresh that plan and and maybe flesh it out a little further, because, you know, a lot could be done there for a little bit of money. And that's I think probably the most used and most popular walking trail that we have in town.
So that you had a phrase there that I think is important to kind of like hit on, but a lot can be done for a little bit of money. So so that's the thing we're going to have to come to is, or the resolution we're going to have to come to more accurately is, are we going to try and and are we going to look at the cost benefit? You know, what can we get done for as little as possible so we can get as much done as we can versus two million dollars worth of roads? We could do two million dollars worth of roads, and then we could do. But I want to have a kind of a holistic conversation on, you know, the total opportunity.
Certainly, certainly. And, you know, because on the other side of that, I I'm a big advocate. And I was happy to see it well represented in the survey of, you know, connecting, especially in Warehouse Point, our residential area and Warehouse Point to the commercial area where, you know, via sidewalks and bike lanes and stuff like that. Because now, if you live in Warehouse Point, you kind of live in an island. You can't really walk anywhere. And with the the work that's being done across the river in Windsor Locks, you know, a lot of that is transit oriented. You know, we should be looking forward to what we can do to to connect to the business zone so people can walk to their jobs or go to these different establishments and without the use of a car. So I think that's certainly something that, you know, we should look into. And I know a lot of that that work has already been done as part of the Route Five survey. Maybe we can pick a few things off that menu and see how feasible they are.
Yeah, so this is getting kind of like, you can see how this is exciting to get into, and then you get to the starting line and realize there's only like four hundred directions you can go, and so what do you do now?
Yeah, and I like the the way this could be kind of consolidated, you know, we should start, I think the next thing we do is dig into each one of these four or five main topics. And and then just get a list together and then decide, you know, like you say, like, you know, do we want to do one thing for two, two million or seven things, you know? A lot more work left for you to do. Oh, yeah, yeah, us, I mean us.
But that right there is a great suggestion. So what we could do, maybe the next couple of successive meetings, you know, if you turn to if you turn to page twenty-nine of the PowerPoint. Maybe we can just focus on hard infrastructure as the next one, and then environmental quality, one after that, and then quality of life after that, and see if we're starting to kind of see a picture here. You know, kind of like Michelangelo when he was chiseling the statues out of the statues out of granite. Kind of see it being worn. Ever seen that before? All right. Anything further on this?
Well done.
Then with that, I'd like to kind of go out of order again. We have no further business to come before the I don't believe we have any further business to come before the board except for selectmen's reports, and I know Attorney DeDene is here. So I'd like to go into executive session and and come back out. We'll finish selecting reports after that. To have a motion to go into executive session to include Attorney Kevin DeDene and Director of Finance, Amy O'Toole.
We'll move, we go into executive session with the five of us, Attorney Kevin DeDene and Finance Director Amy O'Toole.
There's a second. Motion has been made in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are in executive session at eight eighteen P M. All right, we are out of executive session. The it's ten eleven. Next item of business is selectmen's reports. So this week marked the beginning of the school year, and I want to wish all these other students a great year ahead. The Town Department of Public Works has been working hard last week and this week to make sure that the grounds are ready for the return of students. The town's new building official, Ken Rich, has been with us for a little over a month and has completely caught up on all outstanding building inspections and land reviews. Ken has already brought forward several long overdue ideas about how to make that department as helpful to residents and businesses in our community as possible. We're very excited to have him on board. Just a reminder that on the November ballot, there will be a question authorizing the proposed community center. Over the last several months, preliminary plans and conversations have taken place to have the town sue operations at Scott Hall add an approximately eight thousand square foot addition onto it and locate all of our community services departments, including social services, senior services, and parks and recreation on that one. Final project plan should be in hand by the middle of September. We've been working hand in hand with Scott Hall Building Committee on that transition. We certainly appreciate their support. Give or respect to the recitation of the Scott of the New York Center stuff. This Saturday, the Robert Fire Department will be holding their annual car show in East Windsor Park from ten to two. The event is open for any cars, trucks, or motorcycles, and is free for spectators. With a ten-dollar entry fee for anyone looking to display a vehicle. East Windsor Dog Park will be closed tomorrow and Saturday for fertilization. We apologize for any rules that may present. The last day for the slash pad for the year will be Monday. It's been a great season, and we're looking forward to having everyone back, everyone back again next year. On September tenth, the Lions Club will be holding their third annual golf tournament at Grassmere Country Club. It's a hundred dollars per person, includes green fees and a buffet lunch. For additional information or to reserve your portion, please contact Derek Lutz here. Also, on the tenth, the museums on the Green will be hosting their annual ice cream social. The event includes free ice cream, haircuts, horse-drawn wagon rides, sports for arts, spots for artists, crafters, or flea marketers, and more family fun activities. That'll be from eleven to three. On the seventeenth, the Board of Assessment Appeals will be holding their motor vehicle appeals hearing beginning at nine thirty A M. Anyone who feels their motor vehicles were improperly valued, they may appeal on a first come, first served basis at that time. Appellants should bring documentation supporting their vehicular mileage, repair costs, or any other factor that may have led to improper value issue. Lastly, I'll just end with, last week Representative Foster and I met with Revenue Services Commissioner Mark Button to discuss different ways to bring public water to areas in the community that have well-water contamination issues. It's been an ongoing issue we've been working on since we all got here. Commissioner Bowden shared some great ideas around ARPA, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the Inflation Reduction Act, Community Investment Fund, state funding, and other opportunities. I've been in several webinars with him, and he is an amazingly helpful guy. So those are, those are works in progress.
August tenth, twenty twenty-two, I attended a police commission meeting. Financial reports were discussed and approved. Traffic issues were investigated. Complaint regarding rural dropping road and Windsorville Road intersection. A safety concern was investigated. Requested to install a stop sign, a head sign was deemed unnecessary. The issue seems to be speed-related, therefore selective traffic enforcement will take take place. The other complaint was regarding a business on Rucker Road and a need for a blind driveway sign. It was determined that an intersection warning sign before East Road, eastbound and westbound would be the proper step to take. D P W will be notified for this installation to take place. The accident regarding the gate damage prior, these ones are inland, so patient driver, Ian, the girl crash discussion took place. August seventeenth, I attended East Windsor Housing Authority. Guest speaker was Dave Holmes of Capital Studio Architects. He gave an overview of the ongoing feasibility study regarding the proposed housing plans of various properties held by the East Windsor Housing Authority Commission. The August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, one push control authority meeting was canceled due to a lack of a form. That's all now.
Thank you, Alan.
Right, planning and zoning. You know, they had a couple of different things going on, but the one thing that I felt like it was important to report on is a public hearing that they opened for the two ninety-seven North Road special use permit renewal for soil management facility. This permit is different from our gravel pits in that they will be taking soil in. This makes this more complex in that they need to test the soil and have it removed if it tests for any hazardous materials instead of spreading it over the old dump site. There's a bunch of rules and procedures for how testing is managed for these types of permits. So town staff is reviewing it to make sure everyone knows the process. Much more information will be discussed at the next meeting. And I just want to say it's important that we get this right because of the proximity of the site to the Skinnick River. Broadbrook Fire Department had their normal meeting. The one thing to come out of that for us, I believe, is they once again discussed getting on our agenda to talk about fire department space needs in the short term in regards to the community center, as well as a longer-term strategy. And as I had brought up before, they, you know, they are looking to, you know, get some sort of a commission put or committee put together to you know, do a holistic look at all the public safety needs and come up with a long-term plan, like a twenty-five-year plan or whatever. So I'm sure we'll be hearing from them soon, and that's all I have for you.
Sure.
On August twenty-fourth, I attended a rather short Board of Education meeting. Not much business was conducted. Superintendent Dr. Patrick Tudorin reported that a high school business teacher was not hired for this school year. There were three applicants, but after it was known that funding would be secure, it was too late to fill the position. It was expressed that job postings need to be posted earlier going forward to appeal to viable candidates. A financial update was not given this month. However, there was a memo to board members in their packet from the business office stating that final check. stating that final checks for the fiscal year twenty twenty two operating budget will be cut on April twenty fourth to close out the year and that the ending balance is anticipated to be slightly higher after all the salary grant offsets were completed. In regards to the fiscal year twenty three budget, it was also stated that there was a glitch in Munis causing the totals to differ from the adopted budget numbers. It took a week for Munis' support team to correct the issue. A presentation is expected to be given on both budgets at the first September meeting. It was suggested that the board consider having a liaison to the PTO and Booster Club to communicate what is going on at their meetings. And going forward, there will be a Board of Education member in attendance. Monday was the first day of school. Last night was the Broadbrook Elementary School's open house and the middle school will host theirs on Wednesday, September seventh. I'd like to wish all of our students and staff a successful school year. On August twenty fifth, I attended the final concert at the East Windsor Summer Concert Series at East Windsor Park. I'd like to thank our Parks and Recreation Department for doing a great job every Thursday evening throughout the summer. I have already heard from many families that they cannot wait to attend again next year. And finally, East Windsor Parks and Recreation is in search of dance instructors so they can continue their dance program this season. I will attach the requirements and responsibilities to my post online. Interested parties should contact the Parks and Rec Office at eight six zero six two seven six 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 two. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Um, back to your financial comments. You said April twenty fourth, is that April twenty fourth or August?
August twenty fourth. If I say April, I misspoke. August. Sorry about that. Yes.
It will be awful.
Sorry.
Charlie, all right, that's great going last because everybody mentions everything. So on August twenty second, I attended the BMX committee meeting and they basically went through we'll see a lot of ways, different ways they're gonna fundraise and stuff of that nature. They did say that National Night Out was a great success for them. They had lots of participants sent their food. They are planning on attending the ice cream social, which is occurring on September tenth. And they are also doing a fundraiser at Geistler's sidewalk sale on Saturday, the ninth seventeen, between ten and two, they'll be selling this year's hot dogs and soda. The Geistler's always lets different groups in town don't need that. They made the hot dogs and soda and wherever money you collect goes to that that town, so. That fundraiser. So this year they're gonna be which one? And the only thing was I attended last night's open house. We've all attended. I was there with PTO. And it was good to see all the little kids getting their first room anxious about themselves. And next week will be PTO's first meeting at the elementary school cafeteria at seven o'clock. That's next Thursday.
Oh, one one thing I should mention is we're having a Freedom of Information Training next Thursday at five thirty. That went out to all town staff. I think you guys want to email to even just so you're aware, if you wanna go with it. Attorney Sam Maruga has literally written books on the Freedom of Information Act, like six of them. So he is truly, and this is in conjunction with. Okay, so public participation, this is the public second opportunity to address members of the board. There is nobody here present. If there's anybody online who would like to address the selectmen, please state your name and your address. State your business.
Fifty three, Prosper Hill Drive. I have two things I'd like to say. One, I noticed that there's not a camera on the ballot drop box on a town hall. And I'm not sure if there's one at the annex or not, or even if there's any other locations. And I was wondering if that was on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen to take care of in order to secure election integrity.
So there is, I don't believe there even is a ballot drop box at the end. It's just a town hall, is my understanding. And it is captured on one of the internal cameras here in the in the hallway.
So there is a camera at the drop box?
Yes.
Okay. The second thing is I was a little disappointed earlier when we had twenty three minutes to discuss nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars in expenditures for four different projects. And yet there was nothing for the townspeople to have anything to make any kind of educated informed vote on it. For instance, now the the high school roof, I've been kind of after this ever since I got into town. I was a little shocked to see that it was only two hundred thousand. I know that it's going to require a lot more than that, and I hope that that does get done sooner rather than later. That's been a project in the works for a long time. Another point is things like the the loader for public works, three hundred thousand dollars. Where did that number come from? How is there a a way for us to verify that that is what that specific loader cost? And not two hundred eighty thousand and somebody is pocketing twenty thousand? How do we know it went out for three bids and not just one? I mean, how can the townspeople access information like this before they are forced to make a decision on a million dollars in twenty minutes?
Okay. Uh, anybody have anything else? A motion to adjourn with the alert. Is there a second? Non debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Good night, Al.
Okay, no, nobody's going to acknowledge that. Okay, that's awesome.